Let's call it a order if we can, please. The meeting of Wednesday, October the 6th, 2010. We, the board is going to go into closed session. Actually, the roll call here is afterwards for some reason, but I guess, do we need to postpone the roll call or do we have that before the closed session? For some reason, it seems out of order, but any event. The board is going to go into closed session to discuss Government Code Section 549-57.6. Two matters: negotiations with the PCC, F.A., CSEA 777, ISSU, and the POA. Mr. Ingeldinger is our designated negotiator. The other matter is unrepresented employees, confidential, management association, again, Mr. Ingeldinger. And also Government Code Section 549-56.9B, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation one case. Is there anybody who would like to address the board with respect to any of the closed session items? Seeing none, I think we are set to go into recess for a closed session. We'll be back here in open session at 7 o'clock. The Board of Trustees is back in open session, and there was, is no reportable action to, with respect to any of the closed session items that we addressed. So let's begin with a roll call, please.
Mr. Thompson?
I am here.
Mr. Baum?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Fellow?
Here.
Dr. Mann?
Present.
Ms. Wa?
Present.
Mr. Pack?
Present.
Okay. Is there any public comment with respect to non-agenda items? We have a card from Ling O'Connor. Is, do you want to do this now or do you want to wait and do this after we swear in Ms. Wa?
You don't have public comment until later in the agenda.
Oh, you're, okay.
The pledge of allegiance.
Okay. May we ask you to hold this, Ling, until we get through with our soon-to-be newest, or already newest trustee being admitted here. Okay, let's now have a pledge of allegiance, and I may ask Dr. Fellow to lead us.
Please stand. Place your hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. We're here. Oh. There's the oath. There we go. Okay. Do I do this in between the Bible? Okay. It's my pleasure to administer the oath of office to Linda Wa. Linda, may I ask you to join me over here, please? And to repeat after me, this is the oath of office for the Office of Trustee for the Governing Board of the Passing Area Community College District. I, Linda S. Wa.
I, Linda S. Wa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations and welcome. Okay. If you've got a picture taken, then we'll give you a chance to say something here. I think we better do that.
Did all the trustees end, please?
Roll this this way.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here to support me, not only tonight, but during the whole process. I'm really honored to have even have been considered for this position and then to have eventually been successful in the appointment. I think PCC for our community has always been a gemstone, an educational gemstone for us, and then for me to be able to represent Area 5, our communities, and really bring our community's voice to PCC and bring the benefits of the college back to our community is a great honor for me. So special thanks to all of you, my family, and all of the NWPC, all of my girlfriends, all of my friends from CAM who are here and stood with me throughout all of this process. I just want to thank you. And also special thanks to many of the students and the faculty who came out to support me. That was a real honor for me. So, thank you very much.
Shall we do the Gossard recognition before we break?
No.
We can do that. Sure.
Okay. We're going to do one thing before we break for the reception to recognize and honor Ms. Wa, and I'm going to turn it over to President Rocha for that.
Thank you, President Thompson, and congratulations, Trustee Wa. We'll take a short recess in a moment to celebrate the occasion of the swearing-in of Trustee Wa, but at this time, I would like to call to the podium Dean Beverly Tate and Coach Dennis Gossard.
To the Board of Trustees and to guests, I'd like to maybe read something about Dennis first. Is that okay?
You are on.
Thank you. Thank you. Dennis Gossard, entering his 32nd season, Coach Gossard has the longest coaching tenure of any sports coach on PCC's campus. And now, for the third time in his career, Gossard is in charge of the Lancers Program's interim head coach in 2010. As coach from 1987 to 1994 and in 2005, Gossard's teams won 49 games, ranking third best on the PCC all-time football coaching list. And then as head coach, Coach Gossard guided the Lancers to a pair of bowl championships with victories in the 1990 Orange County Bowl and 1992 Rose City Classic Bowl hosted by PCC. Overall, Coach Gossard has been a part of seven PCC bowl champion squads and three conference title winners. As a head coach, and this is what I want you to really hear, this is what's really important, 147 of his players earned scholarships at four-year universities. Gossard and his wife, Jerry, have two adult children, Jessica and Hudson, and two grandchildren, one that's just three months, and he's still coaching. Can you believe that? So, and also in front of you, by the way, besides Coach Gossard, because this is also really important, I gave out to you all the students from 2000 who have transferred to the football program, has been very successful in transferring students to four-year colleges. And if you come to our next game, please make sure that you get a copy of our program because it goes all the way back to 1969. It shows all the students on the football program that have transferred to four-year colleges. Dennis Gossard.
All right, Dennis.
First of all, I want to thank the tremendous support I've gotten from our dean, Dean Tate. You have no idea what she's done for our athletes. She's been outstanding. And from Dr. Rocha. They've both been very supportive of me, and I want to thank them publicly because they, without their support, I wouldn't be standing here tonight, believe me. They've bent over backwards to help me. Also, I want to introduce, it's nice that this, you heap this praise on me, but believe me, I really don't deserve it. I want to introduce the two people that really run our football team, that without them, we'd be lost. And I've been doing this 40 years, so I know what good coaches are, and these two gentlemen, one runs our offense, one runs the defense, are the best I've ever seen, and I've done it for 40 years. Seth Morris, right there, Seth runs our defense. And Shandon Silva, who runs our offense. Also, too, you know, behind us is, are all these young men and guys and ladies and gentlemen, I've coached a lot of years, and this could be my last year at Pasadena City College, and I couldn't, these are a great group of young men. I love them to death, and win or lose, I'll go anywhere with them. They're polite young men, they do a great job, and I love you guys dearly. Thank you, guys. Coach Silva's going to introduce his, our assistants on offense. Coach, come and introduce them, will you please?
Today, we only have Coach Sean Davis, wide receivers. Coach, come on up, Coach Davis. Those missing from my offensive staff is Coach Faisal Mailo, my offensive line coach, and Coach Damon Williams, quarterbacks coaches, and Coach Peters is back there. I'm sorry, Coach, come on up, is our running backs coach.
You know, I'm a little proud of Coach Peters. Coach Peters played for us back in 91 and 92. You talk about success stories. Coach Peters is the dean of students at Dorsey High School, so let's hear it for Coach Coach Mo, come in.
Say, we're in the two-minute drill, Coach.
Thank you so much.
Could I ask you just to come forward so President Thompson and I can give you this certificate of special recognition?
While he's coming up, I just want to say one thing. I was fortunate enough to go to the home game against Valley College, and in my eight years on the board, it was the best team that I've seen PCC field, and you have done a remarkable job, and I would encourage anybody, if they want a great evening, and I brought my six-year-old daughter, come out to Robinson Field and see Lancer football because there is a new excitement, there's a lot of great performances done by these players, and they must have, and they obviously have great leadership. So, congratulations, Coach.
And we're now going to go back and pause for a brief reception honoring Linda Wa and her family who are here. You have one of the largest families I think I've seen in a long time, but we're going to stop and have a little refreshments and recognize Linda, so please join us for that. We'll be back in a few moments. Board of Trustees, we have two cards. There were two cards here. Did someone take them off? So we only have one card. Okay. We have a card or request to speak to us from Ling O'Connor, and I think that our student trustee, Mr. Pack, would like to say a few words to introduce Ms. O'Connor, presumably she is still here. There she is. Okay.
Yes. Thank you, President Thompson. I did leave a present for everybody in the break between a closed session and open session, so all of you may have noticed or may not have that. We have a professor with us tonight who's won a wonderful Green Leadership Award. Some of you may be familiar with Green Technology. It's the company that sponsors the California Community College, Green California Community College Summit every year, and so they're right, right in our backyard, they're in the city of Pasadena, and so they have honored Dr. Ling O'Connor with the category of instructor award for green leadership. And so there's a little summary of what the award means. It also was written about in the Pasadena Star News, you'll notice on the last paper. I've put that article in there for you. And so I just want to have her come up to the podium to give her comment with that introduction because she is definitely very deserving of that recognition. Her hard work at this college is beyond what I could summarize in this brief introduction, so if you'll join me in applauding Ling and welcoming her.
We are certainly the beneficiaries of her service and devotion and dedication, and we are most appreciative.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone, and I really do like to take the opportunity to thank everyone here. There's so many people on campus and countless number of students over the years who've really inspired me and helped me and made it possible for me to receive this reward coming up in next week. And leadership is really, truly a team effort, so I really want to thank everyone. I also want to take this chance to say that everything I do is driven by love, love for the students, love for this campus, and love for this community. And I know at times, I've been here before, the words that came out of my mouth may not sound like love, and I apologize. And speaking of leadership, and I wanted to share with everyone that Elliott Middle School just won $100,000 grant money, and they won that money with everyone stepping up to be a leader because leadership, it really is a team effort. Every single person on their campus, 100% of the students, attended a global warming assembly where they learned the relationship between their food choices and greenhouse gases and their personal health impact. They got rid of all the soda machines, they provided health options in the cafeteria. It is so inspiring to see the whole community coming together. You know, miracles can come true if we all work together. It's just so awesome, and it really gives me hope. And these ideas have also been proposed at PCC under the leadership of Dr. J.K. Jacobs. Sustainability across the curriculum is part of our mission, and the Shared Governance Sustainability Committee has unanimously voted to recommend that we have a campus-wide presentation on sustainability issues on Flex Day, and among other recommendations. And what Elliott is able to accomplish really gives me hope that we can do it here, too. Dreams do come true. If they can do it, so can we. So these ideas may not and will not stay forever as merely ink on paper, and I thank you for your attention.
Yeah, we thank you for your contributions.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to the agenda. Have approval of minutes. We have a special meeting of September 14th of this year, a regular business meeting of September 15th, and a special meeting of September 17th.
Move approval of all the minutes as a group.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Are there corrections, additions to any of the minutes? Jeanette, Mr. Man?
Yes, for the meeting on Friday, September 17th, on the second page, on ballot number six, the unofficial poll as the second choice, I may be wrong, but I thought Mr. Fellow's second choice was Linda Shaw, not Warren Weber. And, I mean, when we voted for second choice, did you voted for, I thought you voted for Linda Shaw. You voted for Warren Weber?
No, I think that...
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the other change that I would like to suggest is on page two of the September 15th minutes, and it's under my, it's under my report, and there's, there's an inconsistency in the use of titles. At one point, Jack Scott is referred to as Jack Scott, at the other point, he's referred to as Chancellor Jack Scott. I think we should, we should be consistent if we use titles one place and not the other, and I think we certainly should have used, and I'm sure that I used it, Dr. Jill Biden's title. So I would like to suggest that we add Chancellor to the first place and add Doctor to Jill Biden.
Is that okay with the maker of the motion and then the second?
Yes.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we come to introductions, announcements. We have already had the special recognition of Coach Dennis Gossard. Any other introductions or announcements? Any board members? Dr. Rocha?
No introductions or announcements. I have one or two quick ones on reports.
Okay, we'll get to that in a moment. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
I have one quick introduction, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Today is also an exciting day. In addition to having Ling come to talk to us a little bit about sustainability, we have reached a decision with associated students for our appointment process of the very first vice president for sustainability. That position was newly created as of June, and because it didn't fall in with our election cycle, we weren't able to appoint somebody, so we had a very extensive application and interview process, and in our audience, we have Hannah Israel, who is our brand-new vice president for sustainability. We're very happy to have her. Hi, Hannah.
Thank you. Any other announcements or introductions? Okay, let's go on to reports and Board of Trustees. Ms. Brown?
I have no report.
Dr. Mann?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Martin?
I just want to call the attention to two, two items. One is that the White House convened a summit on community colleges this Tuesday chaired by Dr. Jill Biden, who's a faculty member of the, at Northern Virginia Community College. She's the spouse of Vice President Joe Biden, and it also had a keynote address by President Obama, and it's just an indication of the, the growing focus and emphasis by, by this country and by this administration on community colleges as the solution to many issues with our workforce development and, and a path to economic recovery. And so I want to make sure we're connected to those efforts, and I anticipate, hopefully, new legislative initiatives that will recognize the value that community colleges provide. Number two is I just got a, my first comment from a community member who said he was pleased to be able to monitor the PCC Board of Trustee meetings in his pajamas as he was flipping through cable TV the other night, so I was, I wanted, I'm just glad to know that somebody's out there watching.
Right. We'll not ask any questions about that one, so. Mr. Pack, any reports?
Aside from our appointment of the vice president for sustainability, I will defer any reports on AS to Jamie.
Dr. Fellow?
There's times I'd like to wear my pajamas.
Please do, please do not do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Wa?
Nothing to report.
A couple of things. I have, Dr. Rocha and I attended last, or Saturday, excuse me, Friday, the 24th of this month, a week ago, the, or a little over a week ago, I guess it was, the meeting of the stem cell poster session here on campus with Dr. Johnson and Dr. Eversole. Same involved with that, and that was a very enlightening and very positive presentation. Had a number of students there who would serve as interns and heard a lot of the results of that, the benefits of it, and it was really exciting to be a part of that. The other thing, couple of things quickly, is that we have in our hands a news release that was in the paper this morning, the Passing Star News, about the passing of the fight school district being awarded $2.4 million grant to increase graduation rates. And that's a very positive piece of news for the community, and I just can't help but call to your attention that the information that was provided to us in our packets, there is a recognition of a scientist, Director of Laboratory Services at Methodist Hospital in Arcadia, Sonia Malgin, apparently an adjunct faculty in the medical assisting program here at Pasadena City College, so that's certainly worthy of notation. The final thing is I hope all of you were able to take a look at this collection of very good-looking people who had their pictures in the Passing Star News for having attended the PCC Foundation fundraising event center for the arts at the Blacker House in Pasadena, the home of Harvey and Ellen Nell. Those are my reports. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, thank you, President Thompson. Yes, in your packets are a number of other informatives, so rather than go through those, I'll leave those for you to read. A lot of important information. One very, very quick note that I've referred to in the past, one of our premier programs is the study abroad program. Our students are in Florence right now, and you are aware that the State Department has issued a watch terror alert for Europe, and I wanted you to know there's information in your packet that assures you that our students are being seen to and being, and I just had a communication with the director of the program today, so they're, you know, under good stewardship there. The only other thing that I point out in your packet is, first of all, to congratulate Dr. O'Connor on her Green Leadership Award, I'll be appearing at that conference to make some remarks. In your packet is an extensive sustainability progress report that I'll be presenting to the Sustainability Committee tomorrow. It, it gives you a brief overview, but a factual overview of the many actions that we've taken. I do want to especially thank Vice President Van Pelt for sustaining the sustainability program, but also for representing me. Next, next week, in that report, the, we are one of the 674 institutions who is a signatory to the American College and University Presidents Climate Commitment. Next week will be their national gathering. Pasadena City College has been selected to receive the first-ever Second Nature Institutional Excellence in Climate Leadership Award in the Associate Colleges Tribal College category. So that's great for us, and I thank everybody on staff who has had a hand in that. And the rest of that report will show in bullet points all the things we're doing on the sustainability front. There is no question... There is no question that in our Edmaster Plan will be a major goal to achieve a, a truly sustainable college community in every, every sense of that word. And that's my report, President Thompson.
Well, good, thank you. Ms. Hammond, any report?
Yes, I do have a few. In addition to Hannah being the new Vice President for Sustainability, we have reinstated the, a, a secretary position that we had for all of our clubs, and we hired our new club secretary, our AS secretary as well. So now, we have filled two positions and have completed our board and our office completely, and so we're really excited about that. We've been very active within the region. Vice President for External Affairs, Alexander Soto, assisted in passing a paperless directive for the Region Seven and for California Community Colleges. And so they will be moving towards digital agendas, minutes, and all of that, thanks to Alex's help. The AS has also, I'm very excited about this, we're reinstating the Homecoming Tailgate Party as well. So we're going to have a tailgate on October 30th for the Homecoming game. And the members of the AS Board are going to be working towards more spirit campaigns as well to increase student attendance at the games. So you'll be seeing many more of us in the, at the games to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yes, Classified Senate had their retreat on Flex Day, in the afternoon on Flex Day. And actually, we made a lot of progress during that meeting. We decided to update our constitution and bylaws to bring them more in alignment with the mission of the college. And along that line, some of the goals that we have include doubling the current amount of payroll donations to support scholarships. And we added a brand-new goal to encourage, support, and facilitate student learning and success by developing an ad hoc committee to investigate the parameters for establishing a student scholarship. That will be a first for us. So we're real excited about that.
Good, thank you. Mr. Martinez?
No report at this time. Just want to let you know that you have a copy of the Senate null seconds at your desks, and that's all for now.
Dr. Douglas?
Well, I'd like to report on behalf of Natural Sciences that we just had one of our students, Kathleen Carlos, had a, her paper accepted at Abercamps, which is the annual biomedical research conference for minority students, which is going to be held this year in North Carolina. She's part of our Cal State PCC Bridges Program. So she does, they go to Cal State LA in the summertime and do research. And you'll love this, the paper's titled "Effects of Serotonin Depletion in Rats: Impaired Reward Learning and Intact Motivation." So we're going to be well-represented at the Abercamps Conference.
Good. About the rats, or?
Serotonin depletion.
Ms. Coler, Colgress?
I'm good, thanks.
Mr. Miller?
No report now, thank you.
Ms. Chapman?
Just very quickly, that again, this year, at the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations, PCC did indeed receive awards. We took gold for social marketing. That's the, the Twitter and the blog and the Facebook, et cetera. We took silver for our catalog cover, for the 2010-11 cover. And we took bronze for the PCC TV logo. So again, this year, under the direction of Juan Gutierrez, we did great.
Wonderful, thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, let's give congratulations to Juan. I did, as a point of privilege, President Thompson, you'll note that Juan Gutierrez is not here tonight. I don't know what's going on with him. I think somebody says he's getting married on Sunday.
Yes.
So for the record, we want to congratulate Juan and wish him well on his, on his wedding.
Very good. He was here, but I...
He was, he left.
I sent him home.
Oh, he's got stuff to do.
Dean Engeldinger?
No report.
Dr. Sugamota?
Just to thank you for acknowledging the Nell event at the Blacker House. Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson.
Dr. Wilcox?
No report.
Dr. Jacobs?
No report.
Dr. Van Felt?
No.
My goodness gracious. People must be eager to hear about the budget. Okay, approval of consent items. Any items that need to be, or anyone would like to have addressed separately?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved in a second, Mr. Baum?
I'd like to pull one for a second, separate vote. Forty-seven P.
Okay.
Forty-seven P.
Yeah. Any others?
Let me see. I had a question on forty-five B.
Forty-five B, okay. Anything else to be addressed separately? Okay, we have a, can we go ahead and move, we have a motion, a second to approve, but can we deal with forty-five P, B, excuse me?
Yes.
And forty-seven P separately, but let's address the motion with the rest of these items. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Baum, forty-five B?
The reason I just wanted to call attention to forty-five B, it is, it is for a contract to renew our arrangement for pool maintenance. And I don't object to the, the contract being renewed, but it indicates, to me, it underscores the, the costs that we incur for maintaining our facilities, for some of our facilities that actually get a heavy amount of use by non-PCC organizations. And our pool is one of those facilities that gets a, a significant amount of use by people that are, and organizations that are not part either instruction or related intercollegiate athletics. So I'm hoping that as we acknowledge the costs of maintaining these facilities, we, we then, it prompts us to take a look at the use policies that, that we apply to them so to make sure that we, that we are not just maintaining a facility for the benefit of other organizations, that it's primarily maintained for the use and benefit of our students. And, and so that's why I raised that issue. We had a report last year that showed that one organization actually had, appeared that had more hours of usage of our pool than our own instructional program. And, and so I just wanted to be mindful of that as we commit additional resources to maintaining that facility.
Dr. Rocha, can we check into that?
Yes, first of all, I thank trustee Bronford for the question, because it is helpful. I would say, first of all, that the trustee is putting his finger on, on a revenue enhancement strategy. And so we do promise that on October 20th, we will be bringing a fuller discussion of a revenue enhancement strategy, which would include the rental and leasing of facilities, of which the pool is a primary one. As far as the pool itself is concerned, I think it is well-managed. And I did ask Vice President Van Pelt to update the information, and perhaps he could say a word or two about the actual contract.
And, and again, I had no questions, and Dr. Van Pelt was kind enough to brief me earlier today, so I have no concern about that, just what it prompts for discussion.
But I, I think your, your point is excellent, and we're going to deal with it fully at the study session when we discuss a revenue enhancement strategy and what the Board would see moving forward as policies for the use of facilities.
Are there comments to be made now, or? Okay. That's satisfactory. Dr. Mann?
This is maybe a peripheral comment, but I would just like to ask Dr. Rocha to just look at more facilities than the pool. It's my understanding that, that the tennis courts are now locked, and they used to always be open to the public. And I would like to, I mean, are we, are we planning on renting this space? Or is this a community service we're no longer providing? So could you include maybe all the...
Sure, we're going to do a comprehensive survey of all the facilities that are, if you will, lettable, okay? Or for use for just free community use. Specifically, is there any new news on the tennis courts? Rick?
No, they are available for public use, though. But we can, we'll discuss it in a couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah, will be discussed, all right.
And I agree, that's, that's going to include classrooms as well as...
Oh, classrooms, meeting rooms, the whole thing. It'll be a comprehensive...
Right, the pool is just one example, but I'm glad we're bringing them...
That's right. Pool's a major example, and it's a good one.
Thank you.
The tennis courts are locked, though, is that correct?
The tennis courts are locked, however, people rent the courts, and then they're open for, for the public.
How does someone go about finding out about how to rent the courts?
Through campus use. So they just call campus use and work it out like they do any of the other facilities.
Is there something on the courts to tell people where to call?
I'd, I'd have to go out there. We did put up signage, but I, I think I'd have to check.
Okay. Anything else on forty-five B? Okay. Forty, forty-seven P?
And, and just for the record, I assume the, the vote we took just now includes forty-five B, but I just wanted to have a discussion.
No, it, I pulled that separately, so we'll, unless you think we need to vote on this one separately from the other one.
Yes, yes, because I'm in favor of forty-five B, but I'm, I'm going to cast a, a vote opposing the other one.
Okay. Advisory vote on forty-five B?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, forty-seven P?
And forty-seven P, I raised these issues last time. I, mindful of the, the plight of the adjunct faculty and also our, our budget, I, I feel that we should first, rather than continue to have so many classes subject to large group instruction, I think it might be a more cost-effective strategy for the district to, to bring in adjunct faculty to, to teach these sections and relieve the, the burden. So I, I'm, I'm concerned about the number of courses that are, are being proposed for large group instruction and will not be supporting this one.
Other questions or comments, or you just want some staff?
I do have a question. I looked, there's two of these. You have two people who are teaching four different sections with large group instruction. Is that what this indicates? Mr. Foster and Ms. Basadio, maybe?
Let me turn it to Vice President Jacobs.
Yes. The teachers are, Rod Foster has the four sections.
Of large group instruction? And about how many students does that make per class?
He can teach up to 199, but we don't have that many in, in the classes. So I don't know the exact number, but that's why they are large groups, so they can go over 100.
Do you know what classes these are?
They're mass media-type classes.
Mass seems to be an appropriate title for it, doesn't it?
Yes.
Well, I should, should say, as I've kind of said along, first of all, the item is before your approval because such as it is, this is contractual. Okay, so we are giving you approvals, recommending approvals for things that are in keeping with the current contract. Having said that, I do take your point that we don't have a, a system that we would all like to see. I've made you aware that we're working constructively with the Faculty Association, our negotiations to have a new proposal for large group instruction, because we are all just as concerned as you are as far as the, both the academic excellence and also the, the right of assignment and so on. So while I am forwarding this to you for your approval, since it's a contractual item, I am also assuring you that we will be correcting this, not at the symptom level, but at the root level shortly.
Do want to, do want to add, as a, as a professor and as a chair, I'm in favor of large classes, because at my university, I have one of the largest departments in the United States. You cannot have 20-seat courses unless you have big classes who will make up the funds for that. And, but usually, you only, a professor will usually only teach one K2. And if you go to another university, in the, in the system, UC system, you'll have 900 students in a class, so it's the way it is.
But actually, all we're asking tonight is, this was approved previously, but you see the scratch-throughs, we, we changed those to hourly. Yes, so we're just switching those from large group to hourly or overload.
And then, Dr. Fellow, don't you have the provision for either course relief, or if you're teaching several large classes, you will have a, a smaller class, course load?
Usually, the state universities can only teach one K2, and then you teach either two or three other courses, that's it.
And do you get paid extra for teaching those big classes over above your contract?
Of course not. Faculty want big classes, because that means you teach less. Instead of teaching four, you just teach three courses.
Right. Well, there's some, yes, and having worked in the system, I completely take trustee Fellow's point. So there are some things from that model that we may incorporate. But again, we'll be bringing forward a revised proposal.
Mr. Martin?
I, I'm, for one, appreciate the fact that maybe some of the trustees are bringing these kinds of issues out, but I am one who is not for any kind of blanket policy. I think you leave it to the, the deans, the, the staff, and certainly the superintendent to look at the individual circumstances when you have the diversity of classes and programs and offerings. There are so many variables. I think we, as trustees, have to be careful to not overpolicy this, because it doesn't fit for a nursing lab, or it doesn't fit for an English 1A class, but, you know, maybe for some other course, it's, it's the right thing. So I want to just be, sound a word of caution for us to not get too itchy that we want to see some new policy on this, but rather point things out like this and trust the people involved, have the students and the college's best interests at heart, and can make the kind of detailed decisions where it works and where it doesn't.
Mr. Baum?
And I just want to say, my, my point is not on pedagogy, it's more on use of resources and what would be a more efficient use of financial resources.
And even on that, Jeff, I would articulate, you know, to know that kind of analysis, you really have to leave it to the people that are there, working in the circumstances. And some of these professors may have certain individual things about them that works well in a large group setting, and people have observed that, you know, it's just, it's, it's difficult to, to do that kind of detail when you have so many, so much variety here, which is to the credit of the college. So, but I think it's healthy that we're pointing these things out and have that kind of concern. But in the end, I say this is why we, you know, we have confidence in our people and we let them work.
Other questions or comments on this item? Okay, advisory vote?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. I just, I just became a student again.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, five to one.
No, I saw he's got a foot on here.
Let's now go to item H, public hearing and adoption of proposed 2010-2011 final budget with student access and success initiatives, discussion with possible action. Dr. Rocha?
Thank you, President Thompson. I will ask Vice President Van Pelt to go to the podium, because I'm going to set this up and try and put this in summary and basic summary in layman's language. And then if you have any questions, of course, we will be happy to respond, and Vice President Van Pelt can, and give you the details. I would say, though, just so I can make sure that we're doing things properly, I'm, I'm ready to go, I'd asked General Counsel, public hearing and adoption of the proposed, would I just go and make my presentation, or should we open the hearing first? Counsel?
As I understand your question, Dr. Rocha, it's, it's sort of a ceremonial...
Right.
I think that Mr. Thompson has already opened the hearing by making the announcement that he made, so I think you're free now to, to go. In terms of the legal obligation to hold the hearing, Mr. Thompson has already convened the hearing.
Right.
When the hearing is concluded, I think you should note, for purposes of the minutes, that the hearing is concluded, because it would not be appropriate for anybody to be moving and seconding adoption of it until the hearing has closed.
Right, good.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm live. Okay. Thank you. So, okay, there is one essential sheet that I'd call your attention to, which you have in your packet, and that is the summary sheet that says fiscal year 2010-2011 unrestricted general fund, and it's dated October 6th. It's on the screen in front... in front of you, but als, it is also in your packet, and it, uh, looks like this. Uh, so, basically, first of all, let me, um, since the presentation, the adoption of a fiscal year budget is a significant act, uh, let me make some preparatory comments. First of all, the adopted budget, um, that, uh, the administration is proposing, um, is one that has been, uh, reworked from stem to stern. And I want to first, uh, thank Vice President Van Pelt and his staff for completely, at my request, reworking the entire budget for this presentation, um, so that it is, uh, clearer and has some elements that will make it clearer to you about what you're approving and why. And so I, I do want to thank Rick. It's, it's the, uh, the best budget work that I have seen, and I, uh, and I know the difference. So, uh, so Rick and, is well-prepared to answer any questions, however detailed they may be. The second point that I'd wanna make, and to try and boil this down.
No pressure, Rick.
Uh, into, uh,
Yes?
What you're, I'm, I'm directing you to the summary sheet, but of course, what you have in front of you, those documents are, uh, represent a lot of ours. And of course, you have the big book, which is literally every single cost center, every dime, every dime of, of revenue and expense. The second thing I'd like to say is, just in brief summary, uh, this adopted budget shows that the college's, uh, financial affairs, thanks to the supportive policies of the trustees, are well-managed. We performed in an excellent fashion, um, and approved in fashion in the previous fiscal year, and the budget that we are proposing for the fiscal year that we're in will continue that policy and that practice. We should be extremely, um, feel extremely good and commend ourselves, and I commend everybody and staff who had, um, a, a role in executing this budget in the last year, because a budget that I'm presenting you tonight is only a plan for spending, okay? The real spending goes on with managers and staff every day in the execution and implementation of that spending plan. The long story short is that in the fiscal year that we concluded on June thirtieth, uh, we overperformed, both on the revenue side and on the expense side. So just very, very briefly, let me call your attention to the summary sheet. In fiscal, the first column, in fiscal oh-nine-ten, um, we had brought to you an adopted budget that began with a proposed balance of eighteen point five million dollars. That was a balance carried forward, an operating balance cali, carried forward into the, to the fiscal year that just closed. You'll see as we move through that, that, uh, total revenue was projected at that time of a hundred and seventeen million. If you continue down to the next olive-green portion, you'll see total expenditures were a hundred and twenty point eight million. And so just as a note there, in last year's adopted budget, um, we adopted a budget that was, um, about three million dollars over projected revenue. We projected at the end of the year, at the end of this year, that we would come to a ending balance of fifteen point seven million dollars, okay? So that's the plan that we brought you last year at this time, or actually earlier, uh, than, than this time, because this is later in the year than we would normally do it because we haven't had a state budget. Um, and, uh, then if you, uh, move your eye to the middle column, which is the FY two thousand and nine-ten actual, these, this column represents the close of the books, what we actually did in the fiscal year just closed. It shows, we're posting a, uh, the beginning balance, um, that we put up at the top, and you can just hold that number for a moment. It proposed, uh, it, we actually overperformed on revenue, and, uh, Vice President Van Pelt can explicate that, but it shows that we had revenue greater than projected. Um, it shows, if you go down to the next olive, uh, line, that we had expenses significantly below projection, all right? And so it shows that the next number is, um, four point three million dollars, right? That four point three million dollars is in addition to the eighteen point five. So if you add eighteen point five, or eighteen point six, plus four point three, um, you're gonna get twenty-two point eight million. So in the year that we just ended, we came with a balance, a total performed balance of twenty-two point eight million dollars. We projected a balance of fifteen point six million dollars, a significant overperformance. In this, uh, what we did during the year, uh, per approval board action, we took four point three million dollars of this overperformance, and we transferred it to our capital outlay fund. The capital outlay fund is where we put money intended for capital and other needs. There's supporting documentation. Capital, of course, is, uh, building a building, building a classroom. It can also be transferred into the technology account and, and so on. That's fungible money. There is no plan to spend that money in this budget. That money is parked, okay? But it is intended to be used at some point, of course, upon a recommendation from the administration. So, um, with that money parked, we ended up with a ending balance of nineteen point seven million dollars. We take that ending balance, and we put it up to the, to the third column, the current proposed budget, which is, uh, we hold that up at the top, of a beginning balance of nineteen point seven, uh, million dollars. We are projecting conservatively, uh, revenue of a hundred and nineteen point seven million dollars, all right? A little bit less. I should say, and, and Rick again will elaborate the revenue, but, uh, thanks to Bob Miller, uh, just a few hours ago, I received from Scott Lay, basically, the, uh, the budget that will be, uh, signed tomorrow. It says, uh, the two point two enrollment growth has been retained, the thirty-five million dollars is coming through to backfill categorical cuts, uh, twenty-five million dollars in economic and workforce development program to meet emerging workforce needs, twenty million dollars for CTE programs, uh, and no negative cola, okay? So already, this adopted, this projection, all right, is more conservative than the actual, uh, figure. So, uh, we feel that this projection of revenue at a hundred and nineteen point seven is very conservative and, and, and very fair. Again, if you look at, uh, projected expenses of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty point, uh, seven dollars, you'll see that that is, in fact, less than the expenses that we projected in the previous year. But the, the final note is that you will notice a difference between the nineteen point seven million dollars and the eighteen point seven projected ending balance. And, um, I should say a couple of things about the eighteen point seven. The difference is exactly a million dollars, and in item, uh, H, which is this item, um, at, uh, the appropriate moment, uh, I don't know if it's, uh, can be put up on the screen, but on your item H is the one million dollar authorization for the Student Access and Success Initiative, uh, which is to take one million dollars of this balance and to, uh, actually put it into this year's budget to achieve the deliverables, um, that are specified in item H. Uh, and of course, we'll be, we'll be glad to talk, uh, further about how that's going to work. But to come back to the budget summary, the eighteen point seven million dollars is, um, if you look up, is in line. It's no accident that the adopted and the actual budget of eighteen point five, eighteen point five, and we're projecting eighteen point seven, um, at the end of this, uh, year. So that is a, a summary. Uh, certainly, we are, um, ready and able to explicate, uh, the revenue lines and the expenditure lines, and certainly ready to, uh, elaborate on the, uh, Student Access and Success Initiative. So with that, I'd, uh, turn it back over to President Thompson.
I assume we now turn it to, uh, Dr. Van Pelt for the presentation, bearing in mind what Dr. Rocha has already said and, and not necessarily dwelling on that, uh, too much again.
Well, what I propose is that I just open it up to questions, to see if there are any issues, 'cause obviously, Dr. Rocha just, um, highlighted all the issues.
Rick, did, uh, would you, uh, explain why revenue was higher than we projected?
Yes, there were two or three reasons for that. Um, when we projected property tax revenues, we were assuming that the property tax revenues would be lower, uh, because of all the foreclosures and so forth, and the real estate problems in the state. As it turned out, we came up with two million dollars more than projected. Uh, secondly, we had a mid-year, uh, reversal of the liability where we were expecting a mid-year cut. And thirdly, I think there was about four hundred thousand dollars in federal ARA funds that were made available that we did not know about when the budget was adopted. So when you add those together, you're at about three and a half or four million dollars.
And just as, uh, trustees are gathering their, their thoughts, could you also explain, in the year closed, um, basically why expenses were lower than projected?
Yes. If you, if you see the, the salary, academic and classified, non-academic salaries, basically, this is frozen positions where people, uh, left the employ of the college for one reason or another, and those positions then were held vacant. So, uh, that explains the overwhelming majority of the, of the underage that was achieved in the expenditure side.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, Mr. Bone?
First off, let me say thank you and pray, uh, offer a healthy dose of praise to the President and the administration for putting together a very comprehensive budget, and to the administrations before, uh, over the past year, for, um, managing the resources in such a turbulent time, so that we are in a much stronger fiscal place than any other district I know of in the state of California. So, um, and this, that will give us the resources to do some very important things. So, thank you very much, and, and you really do deserve a lot of credit, uh, for that. And, and I, and I appreciate the clarity with which you've presented the report. I have a couple of issues that I wanna raise. Uh, one is, as we talk about student access and success, and I wanna know how we can address this, because the budget is the most important thing we do next to hiring the President. We adopt the budget, and that's a statement of priorities that we, that we wanna invest in for the district. And I'm turning to the yellow page, and it, the sec, uh, the yellow packet that you provided, and it gives the positions that we have, um, allocated for positions. And, and to me, next to the teacher in the classroom, the most important factor in student success is the support that students receive outside the classroom, whether it's a counselor, or a librarian, or others. And as I look at this, uh, these figures, we've gone, we've gone from twenty-seven point three FTE to twenty-four point seventy-eight. That's about a ten percent decline in the number of FTE available to support thirty thousand students. What in this budget can we do to kind of set a budget priority that makes, uh, uh, investment in counselors, librarians, and other stu, uh, individuals that provide that critical support to students, so that we reverse that trend and it can actually provide more bodies at the frontlines? I've heard all the arguments also about how we're gonna use technology to more efficiently provide counseling services to students, but I still think it's the wrong direction to go in, to, to be actually losing FTE as our student body is growing. And I, I guess I'd throw that to the President or the Vice President.
Well, you know, I'd just say, first of all, there, there is nothing, uh, as important as having a, uh, full-time faculty, and, uh, and of which counselors are an absolutely essential part. Um, first of all, the, uh, we're working on our EdMaster plan, and, uh, the EdMaster plan will come to the Board in December. The EdMaster plan will be the, uh, the North Star, the guide that will, uh, guide the, uh, significant amount of hiring that we will, are searching, if you will, uh, for full-time faculty will be doing in the spring. Then, um, President Martinez and the Academic Senate will be able to take the EdMaster plan and make, uh, recommendations as far as priorities, uh, in terms of, and since, uh, Ed is a counselor himself, I have a feeling that that will, uh, kind of, uh, bubble up to the surface. So, um, the, uh, the counseling positions and the other positions, you know, uh, will be filled, not only because it'll drive the plan, but also that we have a requirement on the, you know, the full-time faculty obligation to, to continue to meet our number. Um, so, um,
So I, I hear the commitment, and then I, I wanna say, as a trustee, I hope the budget supports that direction as well, too.
All those, those, uh, the, the positions, actually, if you will, uh, I haven't held up, but I've asked to not commence searches until we finish the plan. Uh, but, uh, we will significantly replace all kind of, uh, recent, uh, current and pending retirements in this year moving forward, absolutely. Uh, so, and, and the budget is already loaded, as, as Rick pointed out, those, those salaries are already loaded in this budget.
Thank you. Okay, two quick other points. One is, in this packet that you provided, you know, you gave us the breakdown by fund, and on Fund forty-two, on page thirteen, it's the building fund, and there was, um, a funds available of seventy million for, for building. And then the project said construction management and general contingency was twenty-five point two million, and that, that seemed off to me, that, uh, are we, is that for nine years of, uh, of, or, what, tw- it, is that the right number for one year of, of just project management and contingency? This isn't just for one year, however. These, the, the building fund is a multi-year, so this represents the balance of Measure P funds available for the duration of Measure P. The number is actually correct, and the reason why it's correct is because, uh, the Center for the Arts came in significantly less. We're working on that number. However, what you then do is you move the money out of, um, the Center for the Art Construction, and it moves into general contingency.
Okay, good, yeah, because what it, it said to me was that out of seventy million dollars, twenty-five, and that's, that's, what, forty percent is for, I don't think Jack Schulman's making, uh, twenty million dollars, or is he?
Uh, definitely not.
Okay, and, um, and then contingency, we usually operate on about a ten percent contingency, correct?
Normally five.
Five percent. So, uh, so that's just, that's where it's being parked for accounting purposes.
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up? I'm confused. Is Center for the Arts, is the thirty-nine-one the original budget, or is that a revised budget post-bid?
That's a revised budget post-bid.
So you've already moved?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, my, uh, my last question is the, um, Student Access and Success Initiative. I support the, uh, the President's proposal to create this fund, and I just wanna know how it's going to be administered.
That's a good question. I think what, um, you know, and, and, you know, but it is actually partially honest. Uh, you know, what, uh, and I really appreciate the Board, uh, considering this. Given the fact that our, uh, we are fiscally stable, okay, and given the fact that we have, um, really aspirational goals, uh, for student success and student access that we all share, um, we felt that the, the thing to do is, is, uh, rather than to, um, come, you know, through each, uh, through the year and make small requests after small requests and so on and so forth, that we try and shift to this method in which we're asking the Board to hold us accountable for the deliverables in the, in the right column. Now, having said that, I don't want to be facetious about the actual operations in the activity part. So, for example, um, while these monies, first of all, go into a lockbox on my desk, uh, and those, these will not, funds operationally will not be salted into the normal operating budgets of any unit, okay? These funds will be granted on a application basis that, again, um, the Senate and the College Coordinator and Council is, is completing right now. Um, and then the funds will be, um, distributed on the condition that they will be able to come back at the end of the, of the year, in June, at the end of the calendar year, and demonstrate to us that those deliverables have been achieved. For example, uh, item number one, develop smooth pathways to CSU-UC transfer. For example, item number one, develop smooth pathways to CSU-UC transfer, and the deliverable is a new five semester curriculum sequence map for the 60-unit program, and I put it in there SB 1440. Well, develop smooth pathways, that is a bland generality. But just as an example, in terms of operation, what we'll need to do is to work closely with Ed in the Senate, who is working on it now, okay, to do what we might call an alignment project. We will have to spend some money for faculty to get in a room and do these curriculum alignment projects and actually write the curriculum that they will deliver to us, to the Board, rather, for approval. So, that would be one way. I think we're pretty clear on the process, although the reason for the omnibus authorization is we don't know whether we're going to spend $17,000 or $22,005 on that and so on. Rather than go through all these, the other one that is really shaping up, that I could give the trustee a good example, would be item number three, the Distance Education Online Student Information System. I appreciate the support for the faculty. We appointed the first faculty director of Distance Ed, and there is a process underway where it says, "Provide students with greater access to courses and instructional materials on and off campus." So, let me give you a specific example. Leslie Tirapell is at work right now on migrating from the current Blackboard platform to the most up-to-date Blackboard 9.1 platform, right? Now, how do you get a sum, most, all faculty to do that? Well, some of these funds will go for a certification training course that will provide incentive for faculty to take the course, put their materials online, and so on. So, that would be an example of what that...
That's very helpful. My just final request is just that it's a very transparent process for how these funds are allocated and expended, in that I expect you'll be reporting back to the Board how these funds were used and also sharing with the campus community.
Well, you'll see, you will see throughout the year, the ticket omnibus. Okay, so anything that's pledged to this fund, you'll know very clearly what you're approving and when. And on a related front, we won't rehearse it right now, Bob, David, Ed, I think Gary from CSEA are working on just that transparency, and they have a proposal to College Coordinating Council that they've already submitted that will ensure the transparency that we all want.
Just one question to follow up on that. We're proposing to adopt a budget. Now, do you see the Student Access and Success Initiative as being an integral part of the budget?
Yes.
Okay, now, in that, we've got Distance Education Online Student Information System. What does that mean? And let's assume we adopt the budget, and that's a part of it. What are we agreeing to?
Well, in this case, again, there is, say, for instance, the Student Information System, that is, the web-based technology that enables a student to do almost every student...
I understand that, the elementary part of it, but what is it that we're going to be spending money on? And the reason I ask the question is, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think the Board has been asked to address that and to vote upon a specific proposal. We've talked in general terms about distance education, we understand that. But, again, my recollection is, we've had some discussions on that, but of a very general preliminary nature, and so if we're adopting a budget, authorizing spending money on it, at some point, before you start spending that money, we ought to have brought to us a recommendation so we know what it is that the money's going to be spent on.
Yeah. No, well, first of all, again, at the study session on October 20th, we'll be elaborating not only the Distance Ed, but the SIS. This is not ERP, by the way. We're not asking for authorization to spend money on the ERP system. This is for a group that, again, is ongoing, the Campus Technology Committee, to get together and line out the specifications for the Student Information System, and that will eventually be part of the ERP. So, there's some faculty and staff work that needs to be done in all the divisions that needs to get this squared away.
Right, but all I'm saying is that before we get the horse too far out of the barn here, on distant education, we ought to have a specific proposal brought to the Board after having been vetted by the campus constituencies, and we then vote on it and say yes, no, or modified or whatever else, because we haven't done that.
Right. Well, again, first of all, we will do that. Every dollar in this authorization will be brought back to the Board, okay? So, we can't spend any money without bringing it back to the Board, and this is what we're spending it on, this is why. So, you'll see a comprehensive distance education proposal. The part, the major driver thrust of this proposal is that to authorize an omnibus set aside, that this would be the pot of money that we're going to work from. But I completely agree with you. We weren't going to kind of run off and spend the money and then let you know how we did it. Where every dollar that has to be spent, there'll be contracts involved and so on. In the Distance Ed project, in fact, we reviewed a draft of the proposal that we'll be bringing forward to you on October 20th, so.
Yeah, and I don't want to belabor this. My point simply is, I don't want to be brought a contract and a consent item or even as an agenda item, say, we're proposing to spend $600,000 for this. I'd like to have a plan in advance of that so that we know what it is and that we have thoughtfully considered it and approved it, so that we know where the college is going, the college knows where it's going, rather than just kind of on an ad hoc basis, that's all.
Absolutely. So noted, and you will have that, President Thompson.
Other comments, Dr. Mann?
Yes, I have a couple of questions on the, this is on the yellow sheet, actually on the first page, and it's rather where Mr. Baum was, and I thought he was going to raise these. And I understand this is funding for budgeted personnel positions. And if you look down total employees, there's 10 funded, 10 employees, 10 fewer employee positions funded this year than last year, right? Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
And those 10 are faculty, are pretty much teaching positions. If you go down the line, the whole teaching in 2009-10 was 343.84, and in 2010-11 it's 333.93, so that's just a fraction less than 10. That, you know, that concerns me. I don't know how we can be teaching, have more students with 10 fewer positions. And I assume, now, and I may be wrong here, and if I am, please correct me, that adjunct faculty are funded through a position? Is that not correct?
They're not funded through these.
How are they funded?
They're funded, there's actually a holding account for all adjuncts.
But where are they in the budget?
Well, they're loaded into the, actually into Dr. Jacobs' overall budget.
Okay, so you're...
As a single line item.
Okay, so here in this yellow sheet, adjunct faculty, if we have, say, 20 positions being funded, filled through adjunct faculty, that's not here.
That's correct.
So, we have no idea how many adjunct fac, or how many positions we have for the adjunct faculty? Is that correct? We don't have it by reading this sheet.
That's correct. But sometimes adjunct teach one class, sometimes they teach, you know, two classes, so...
I understand, but they would still, a certain number of classes add up to one position, correct?
Full-time equivalent, yes.
Yes, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
These are funded positions.
Okay, so, okay, so what I'm saying is, this does concern me that we have 10 fewer. I also noticed that we have an increase in academic managers, a decrease in counselors, as Mr. Baum pointed out, and I feel like that this is, and I understand we're meeting our fawn, our faculty obligation number, but I hope this is temporary, and I hope that we plan next year, this coming year, we will not have these positions filled. Is that correct?
Let me give you an example. Leslie Tirapelli just moved from being a librarian to being an academic manager.
That's not a very good example, but go ahead.
Well, but the answer is, because what that did with one person is to lower the number of librarians...
I understand.
And increase the manager.
Right.
So, because these are the, when a position opens, it's being held and frozen, it doesn't mean that the position's gone away, it just means that the money has been set aside. So, upon the completion of the Educational Master Plan, then those positions become released in some orderly fashion.
But they're not in the budget?
They're held as open positions. They are not, however, currently funded, as those positions have not been released.
So, when they're released, then we will be, but they won't be being filled for this year?
Well, and that's going to depend on the Educational Master Plan.
All right, I guess I really hate to belabor this, but I don't see how we're going to fund these positions if they aren't in the budget. Is that a revision that we're going to make?
What always occurs during the course of the year is that people will leave the organization. And what occurs then is that their funds become available for refilling and reallocation and redistribution.
So, that would happen during the course of the year?
That routinely happens as a part of the normal operations.
Okay, I did have a couple other questions, but I guess I'm going to, the one that I'm going to raise, that was raised last time, is very specific. It has to do with the Board of Trustees, and it's on page, in the budget book, it's on page 380. And I don't understand why 95% of Ms. Thompson's position is in the Board of Trustees and 0.5% is in the President's office, and just the reverse for Ms. McGee. Is there any reason why 100% of these positions aren't funded in these other areas?
Well, the answer is because there's actually some overlap within the office, that, for instance, if Lynda McGee is gone, then Mary Thompson covers for Lynda McGee and vice versa. So, that's the only reason for it.
And that would be shown through the way that positions are funded in the budget?
The 95% and the 5%?
That's the way you show the overlap?
Correct, right.
All right. That answers my questions.
Ms. Brown?
Actually, when we were working on the budget, did you still use that total compensation model, which really tends to do the people that leave, that the salaries, people that leave, the positions were not filled? And, like you said a couple times, once we complete with the master plan, then we will evaluate where and who needs the position filled. Is that still what we're doing?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Just pardon?
So, in answer to the adjunct question, there's no page numbers, but I'm looking at 1389 Distributed Reserve.
On the yellow?
On the yellow, which is $20,361,000. It's...
There's no page numbers.
About six pages in approximately, five or six pages in, that starts with expenses, academic salaries. And under academic salaries, 1389 is distributed reserves, and that's $20,361,000, so I assume that's our, the part-time teacher she was referring to. That's the line item you were saying.
Correct.
So, we have a budget of over $20 million.
Correct.
For that particular...
For the adjuncts?
Yes.
Adjuncts. And then we can slide up, I'm guessing, to look at 1320, or maybe I'm, I don't know if I'm lining it up right, maybe it's 1320, 1321. You can kind of get a running total to see there was about $19,800,000 in that general, all those categories spent actually last year. Am I getting that right? So, we've got a budget of $500,000 more for adjunct this year than what we spent on adjunct last year.
Correct.
Am I reading that correctly?
And so what happens each month is that fiscal moves over the money into where the expenditure occurred for adjunct.
I'm, I had a few questions, and most of them have been answered previously before the meeting, and I appreciate that. But, so the rest of the trustees are aware of some of those questions. I was concerned about us appropriating funds for our GASB 45 post-retirement benefits. That is included in here, and we're making fantastic progress, is the word, I guess I'd say, towards making sure that our obligation to our retirees is fully funded. I was appreciated to see that. I think there's some transfers into the Work Comp Fund. It's another one I'm concerned about, that we're building an appropriate reserve to handle work comp emergencies, and this dates me, but I can go back 20, I think it was even before Dr. Mann's time, when we set up the first reserve, and we were in three years going to fund work comp and never have to pay for it again. Obviously, a little short-sighted because here we are, still funding it, but to me, thinking back to that meeting where we said we were going to fund work comp and make sure, that's important to me, and I appreciate seeing that. I'd like to make a point on the Student Access Initiative. I am tremendously in alignment with this. I think it's a good, it's a good use of funds, though I totally agree with our President Thompson that there's no way we're signing over a million-dollar slush fund to anybody, and just because it's all good intentions on this page, we need to see a plan, we need to be on top and watch carefully for each of that. I do have to, in all the heaps of praise I want to give people, now bring up something specific on the Student Access Initiative, and maybe I can wait till the later agenda item, but there's one item on here that I'm a little bit concerned about. I'm actually not, and that is item number two, partnerships with PUSD to help students to clear English, Math, and Science. And I have no problems with partnering with PUSD, but I know that the socioeconomic makeup and desire of the Rosemead High School students, and in particular, the Arroyo High School students, are very much comparable to the Pasadena Unifieds. And to have PUSD singled out in here without naming Rosemead and Arroyo, and I have other high schools in my district that I'm not naming because their needs are not quite the same. But Rosemead High and Arroyo High, as well as I'm sure Blair and Muir, are right there. I know Arroyo's part of an upward-bound program, where, as some of the PUSD schools are, that qualifies for them. And I think we have to be careful that we are not short-sighted about what this district encompasses. One of my problems has been that the people that I represent are very far from PCC, and it's been a goal of mine to try to better bring the education to the area rather than hauling the people up to the college. Yes, I'd love to see more satellite classes and certainly would like to see a satellite center, but in the meantime, distance education is a way to deliver the education to them, even closer than a satellite center. So, I'm highly, was asking questions before about Distance Ed, and I know we got some reports coming on that, and I'll hold that, I'm highly complimentary of all that, but it does concern me to see PUSD and not see the Almani Union High School District, which Rosemead and Arroyo are a part of, yet in the PCC trustee service area. So, I'd like to ask that that be broadened to include at least the Almani High School District, or because that encompasses other schools that are not in the Pasadena-area Community College District, at least specifically naming Rosemead and Arroyo, which are.
Let's get a response to that.
Yeah.
Yes, first of all, Trustee Martin, the omission is entirely mine, and I apologize for it. And it was, I prepared that part of the document, I put PUSD in because we've been working on, that's been our first... on, that's been our first task in our set of meetings. Having said that, I want to assure you that that will go back into the document and that we have set up a superintendent's summit that will bring the superintendents of all of the districts, district, school districts and the community college district together to work on a replicable model so that we're leveraging the work that we do in one district for all. So I apologize for the omission.
Okay, well, I appreciate, I'll take that.
It's entirely mine.
May I make one comment?
Sure.
Before, because your comments caused me to think about this. This is the first I've heard of a superintendent's summit of all the superintendents of the, within the PCC College District?
Well, we've, we'll call it a summit meeting, but you know, it's not a formal meeting, but we have on our calendars, since I've already met with Superintendent Diaz several times and meet with him informally quite a bit, we have in our calendars a date coming up, I'm not sure when exactly it is, but in the next few weeks, and wish all the superintendents will get together and have a meet and greet and begin to talk about this issue.
I don't have any disagreement with doing something like that, but again, this is something that I think is critically important that the board know about and the campus know about, and we all make sure we're on the same page and move forward together. I don't think we ought to learn things like this kind of almost inadvertently at a budget discussion. So I think I'm fully supportive of that, but again, let's put together a plan so that we have some coordinated, cohesive approach to doing this, and I think we'll be, the college will be much better ahead if we can do that, so. John, you had...
Yeah, I'd like to keep going. I'm appreciative, you know, there's so many different ways to look at these numbers, and one way obviously is to look at the funded positions and where they are. I wish that another way that we could look at this would be some kind of projection for the total number of class sections that this money is affording. We know there's a desperate need for more class sections. Obviously, this is, you know, this isn't the first time you've heard this from me. Every time any subject comes up, I'm talking about more class section, and if we're talking about money, I want to know how we can offer more class sections to our students who so desperately need it, who are trying to get them. And so I wish there was a way in some subsequent way, the same way we break out full-time positions, there was some estimate, because I realize this is very dynamic, of course, the whole budget is an estimate, as to the number of potential class sections and/or how that would translate to total number of student seats that we are offering.
One of the projects that we're now beginning is that during this budget cycle, we're going to be combining Dr. Jacobs' information with enrollment and class sections into this document so that we can come up with a different way of viewing the information in order to come up with a more dynamic way of doing budgeting.
Because that's, that's very, very important to me, and I think if there was any issue that was important to our students, if you went out in the quad and you just picked 10 students, and you just, they just want to get into their classes, we need to offer as many classes as we possibly can. And I keep going back just, and I know they're not all the same, but approximately $30,000 in my mind is a class. So if there's a way we can squeeze $30,000 out, one extra $30,000 for one more class, you guys can decide what class it needs to be. That's fine, but I'm here to support as many class sections as we possibly can for student success. Got one other final comment. If you turn to page three and you look on the very bottom, there's a number in bold, it's $307 million. That's obviously over a quarter of a billion dollars. That amount of money, now I don't know the city of Pasadena, but I know most of the cities in my area, that dwarfs the city, most city budgets. And there's a lot of things going on here, and there's a lot of things we get involved in that are very important, and of course, student success is the center of that, but there's a lot of responsibility on us as trustees and everyone in this entire institution to manage that properly for our students to get as many classes as we can. We may need more budget sessions for trustees to understand all the important things we need to do to make sure that we're giving this the kind of attention that it needs, again, so we can ring out every additional $30,000 to offer more class sections. So I think it's important for us just to grasp for a moment the magnitude of what this document is.
Other questions? Mr. Pack?
I met with Dr. Rocha earlier.
I talked to Dr. Rocha, and I think he did a great job.
Ms. Wall?
I concur, I think this is a great job, and I'm fully supportive of this plan.
Other questions? Dr. Mann?
I don't have a, I don't have a question, I do have a comment. I also met with Dr. Rocha, I've got with Trustee Brown, and got, I thought a very excellent overview of the budget, and most of my questions were answered, and I really appreciated that. I would hope and planning for next year that I, and, you know, pray God the budget situation in the state will be better, but I would hope that we could have a study session on the budget before we have to approve it. I think it's very difficult for us, knowing we have to act tonight, to really dig into it. And I understand the unusual circumstances, but I think that's going to be unusual now for maybe a couple more years. So maybe in planning the year, if we could just have a study session, I don't know when it would be appropriate, May, June, whatever.
It would probably be more efficient because it sounds like you spent a lot of time and Rick spent a lot of time with each of us.
Yes.
Talking and answering all the questions, so.
Good, good suggestion. We're at the point then where I think we are prepared for a motion to adopt the budget.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, other comments or questions?
Did you close the hearing?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you close the budget hearing?
You're right, I should...
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion, or the public hearing is closed. We have a motion to approve the budget in a second, any more discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Dr. Van Pelt.
Mr. Thompson, may I also just say?
And Dr. Rocha?
That this has been an immense amount of work that's really gone on for weeks and seven days a week, and I really like, would like to acknowledge Odessa Walker and Sherry Hassan and Cindy Smith for all their work, because this wouldn't have happened otherwise.
Good. Thank you very much.
I was going to say, I, two other quick comments. One, and Dr. Rocha mentioned this, this actually was a beautiful layout.
Yes, it was.
This was a very, very clear presentation in the report that was presented, all of you that worked on this, the various funds, the summaries and all the backup documentation, I thought was just right. You know, you can get too much and you can't find anything because there's too much and you can't figure out where it is, and too little. This was just right. I thought they did an incredible job, including the fact that at some point we're going to be $15 million down because of deferred state revenues and the importance of having the kind of reserve that we have to fund that deferred revenue. So compliments to all of you involved, this was a beautiful presentation.
Mr. Baum?
And again, thank you so much. Two things I want to say. One is that it's always important to me for transparency, and I hope that this adopted budget will now be publicly available through the Internet for people to be able to review and know what action we took.
It was loaded onto the website today.
Excellent. Well, that's great, you're anticipating. And number two, I do want to kind of address one thing without getting into a long dialogue about it, that for Dr. Rocha, we have, and given Dr. Rocha and the administration directives to kind of address in-district transfers, to enhance distance learning, and I just want to make sure we don't go, we don't, we are communicating with him those priorities because I'm very pleased to see that he's taking action in response to the direction we've given as a board before, and so I don't take the fact that we may be having a meeting with, that he may be arranging meetings with local superintendents as something to be concerned about. I don't want to have, to go into a long dialogue about that. I want to actually take an opportunity to praise Dr. Rocha's leadership in being proactive on those areas that we've asked him to be proactive on.
Actually, let me just correct, the summaries were loaded today, this book will be loaded tomorrow.
Oh, that's even better, that the summaries are available now.
Yes.
Wonderful.
That's great, because very few people are going to read the book.
Okay, I thought you had your hand up. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item I, Adopt Resolution Number 468, Prove the GaN Appropriations Limits for 2010-2011, Discussion of Possible Action. Dr. Rocha?
I move approval, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
And move is seconded by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. The next is item J, Additions to Credit Curriculum, Discussion of Possible Action. Dr. Rocha?
Curriculum courses in the Medical Assisting Program. I think there are courses that are required for the program, and Vice President Jacobs would be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Dr. Mann?
No, I was just going to move approval.
Oh, okay.
No, second, this is very excellent, I'll second that.
Mr. Martin?
I was just, is, are these courses like lead towards a CNA certificate, or are they related to that, or?
They're part of the Medical Assisting Program. You know, we have the Medical Assisting, and so this is simply keeping it updated, this is like a shell, and if they're the latest, something that they want, topic they want to discuss, they would be able to put it into the curriculum immediately and use, by putting it in the schedule. But it's part of the Medical Assisting Program, which we do give a certificate for.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next is item K, Appointment of Major P Citizens Oversight Committee, Discussion of Possible Action. Leave the person being added is John Martin, you have, or John Gordon, excuse me, not John Martin, that's a different person.
Several of us too, by the way.
Yes, right, right. Now, John Gordon, who is my appointee to the committee, you have his CV in your board packets, is her motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Was Mr. Gordon ever here tonight?
No, 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 not tonight. So, okay, we're on to item L, Accreditation Follow-Up Report Number Two, Discussion of Possible Action. Dr. Rocha?
Great, thank you, President Thompson. I'll ask Dean Miller and Dean Colross to go to the podium. Don't have a presentation, but we will put up a, the Edmaster Plan document just as a kind of a basis. If you go to item, the item, item L, you'll find the entire document there, and it's a clear report that I think reports very, very specific actions that we've already taken. It includes a very clear scorecard of the actions, and it will also include some additional supporting material. So we submit it for your consideration and for your approval, and Dean Miller and Crystal will be glad to take any questions you may have.
One thing I'd like to say is I think the cover on this report is just fabulous, very, very impressive, and so I think Crystal and/or Mr. Miller are to be congratulated on that. Didn't know either of you had such artistic talent.
Well, in fact, it is something that was created by Dr. Rocha and Juan Gutierrez and the publications team, and it plays off of our, of a new model that we are beginning to adopt, this notion of our proud past, global future, celebrating our past and preparing ourselves for the future. And in that regard, I think I would just like to take the opportunity to thank the entire campus community for their effort and work in bringing to you 15 relatively concise pages in terms of our follow-up report. That includes what many people have indicated has been an excellent executive summary prepared by our president, the scorecard concept which clearly articulates the progress that we've made relative to the recommendations, and then a brief overview of the specifics tied to each one of those recommendations. One thing I would like to point out to you as relates to the scorecard on recommendation number two, the reason why you might note 60% completion is because we are not really required to complete that goal until October of 2012. Beyond that, there will be appendices, I believe 19 or 20 that we've identified as of last night, that will go into this document and further strengthen it, and there's been a lot of discussion tonight about distance education, and as Dr. Rocha has indicated, the staff would like to assure you that there is a very specific workflow and work plan that will be presented at the October 20th study session, which I think will, if I may use the expression, warm the cockles of your collective hearts in terms of the things that you guys have asked for the last, really, several years, frankly. So I think we're making good progress in that regard. What you see up on the screen right now is really the touchstone for not only our Educational Master Plan, but really our accreditation. All things that we do and all things indicated in this accreditation report will really focus on what we are now calling Project 90, the guiding PCC into the future. And it's those specific student success achievements relative to transfers, associate degrees, great emphasis on STEM degrees as is being clearly articulated throughout the EMP process thus far, increasing the number of certificates that we award, and then dealing with basic skills. As you know, these are the mission critical items that Dr. Scott has identified as our chancellor and certainly as our college has. There's been a number of on-campus meetings dealing with EMP and the Educational Master Plan and accreditation. All of that is actually, all paths relative to the EMP and our accreditation work lead to and from this document. This document is still being massaged and tweaked and worked with and the like through our campus governance process, but in fact, it does represent the principal direction that we will take as an institution going forward, at least for the next several years. With that said, I think I would be more than happy to take some questions. As Dr. Rocha indicated, Dean Colross and I have sort of co-led this effort, if you will, but with the able support of Mr. Martinez, the Academic Senate, and others, we've engaged a great deal of the campus community in the completion of this follow-up report and look forward to its submission by October 15th and on or about October 13th, obviously next week.
I would say, first of all, that's, I thought, very, very well presented, and I really appreciate the presentation very much. Are there questions of Mr. Miller?
I would like to say the same. I took my time and I read the report and I looked at the recommendations piece by piece, and I was very impressed. I am sure we write on it, it looks good.
And we will be, we will be beefing it up even more before it leaves here, particularly relative to distance education.
Looks real good. You guys have done a wonderful job.
I wanted to add what Mr. Thompson said earlier, he liked the front cover, but I thought the content was just excellent, and there is nothing more challenging, more horrendous, more nightmarish than doing accreditation. I would rather be tortured. It's like men you are. I'll make a motion.
Bob and Crystal would probably say they are, yeah, right.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I didn't mean to suggest that the content was not excellent as well, I just thought the cover was very, very good, quite well done. So are there questions about this? Ms. Baum?
One thing I also would like to say, that cover letter that Dr. Rocha, you know, he just fixed it up so good and talked about our past and our future and what we've done, I mean, come on, anyone cannot see what we represent at PCC. It's just like, no one else is going to get off if we don't. Good job, guys.
Great. Mr. Baum?
First off, a wonderful report and so clearly articulated. On the Project 90, I just have a question about the data real quick, because I think this is terrific, that the president has given us...
the president's given us a way to measure how we're doing against some goals. And one that seemed very ambitious to me is the 50 percent increase in one year in the number of associate degrees awarded, from 1,600 to 2,400. Is, I believe at the state, we approved something, a degree for transfer, or something. Is that how we're able to punch that up so aggressively?
Yes, and, you know, we were anticipating the approval of SP 1440 and the signing of it by the governor, which would, which requires all community colleges by the fall of 2011 to have an associative arts transfer degree in place, which would be a six-unit transfer degree based upon several majors. Academic Senate, as Dr. Rocha indicated earlier, they're working diligently on that. The bottom line of which means that if a student goes through that program, they will be guaranteed admission into a, into the CSU in their area. The CSU would have to take that, no questions asked. So we anticipate that that will result in a number of additional associative arts.
That's terrific, because I agree, during, this is not divulging something during closed session, but during the interview process, I asked Dr. Rocha, like, how do you measure success? And he said, by standing up at commencement and handing out diplomas. That's how I count success. And that, and I found that was a very thoughtful and visionary way to look at it, that it can, we could all easily grasp.
You know, in our sessions, we've had, we call these big hairy audacious goals. And they are. Some of these goals represent some significant goals that are going to take a lot to achieve. And I'm proud to say that the institution is beginning to really come to grips with these realities. And I think we'll work very hard to achieve these goals, certainly by the year 2014, 15.
Thank you.
Okay, other, just, Dr. Mann?
I just have, and it's, and it's a very small one, and I know we're not going to be doing another report for a while, but if we ever do another report like this where we show our proud past, we might want to include Dr. Maryfield, who won a Nobel Prize. There's not very many colleges that can, has a Nobel laureate on their, among their alumni, and-
Except for Caltech.
But I'm saying, let me rephrase it. There's not very many community colleges that have this. So I don't know whether he wasn't included because you felt that people wouldn't recognize him, or whether, you know, you save it for another time, but I don't, I think at the, I know when the ACCT, the American Community College Trustees Association, celebrated the 100th anniversary of the founding of the first community college in Joliet, Illinois, several of us went to that, and Dr. Maryfield was honored, because at that time, he was the only alumnus with, who received a Nobel Prize that they, anyone was aware of. So that's, that's really kind of unique.
Absolutely.
Good point.
Yeah. But I'm not saying redo the cover. I'm just saying, let's, 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 let's highlight him.
A point for the future.
If I may very quickly, not about this, and I think it's in your packets, but I would be very remiss if I did not state, and I had an opportunity before, Mr. Thompson, I forgot, but state appreciation to Dr. Brock Klein, Dr. Lynn Wright, and several other staff members for our successful receipt of a Title V grant in the amount of $3.4 million, almost $3.5 million, over five years, effective October 1. We got very high marks on that grant, that proposal. It's absolutely critical, critical part of our Hispanic-serving institution activities, and there'll be a number of things we do for our first-year students and student success and all those things. So, great kudos to Dr. Klein, Dr. Wright, and several others for all their hard work in making that happen. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, there's, motion been made and seconded. Any more discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Excuse me, thank you very, very much again for work very, very well done. Next item is M, policy number 2560, institutional effectiveness, discussion with possible action. Dr. Rocha, or?
Maybe I'll turn it back over to Dean Miller, because this is very closely connected to the accreditation process.
One thing I would point out is that there is a, been a substitute policy and procedure. One change to procedure due to a very good catch by Dr. Mann when she reviewed this. And there is one, I think item number seven of four C in procedures has been omitted because of that. So, be sure we're talking about the right version of this. Mr. Dean Miller?
Thank you, President Thompson and President Rocha. The Institutional Effectiveness Committee, from an accreditation point of view, in many respects becomes a significant piece. It's almost a heart and soul of what we are about in terms of maintaining a high-quality accreditation status. And if you look at page nine of the accreditation report that you have in front of you, there's a good schematic there that basically shows Institutional Effectiveness Committee in the middle of our process. In other words, all the program review activity that is done by the various areas of the college, administrative services, instruction, student learning services, and the president's office and shared governance, those program reviews will undergo an evidence and data check, if you will. And then they will be forwarded to the Institutional Effectiveness Committee, which will then be charged with the responsibility of monitoring, if you will, almost evaluating, almost a quality control element of the institution to, in effect, make certain that those goals and those objectives stated in our educational master plan are actually being accomplished. So, our college, unlike many, many other colleges and universities across the U.S., has not had an institutional effect in this committee. And if you approve this tonight, we will have that type of committee. And you'll notice that the IEC, after it is done with its review and recommendations, will then reports out to our resource allocation process, as, in the various ways that we are defining it, and we talk a little bit about it in this report. So basically, it's clear evidence that we will be tying budgeting and planning together. And the resource allocation group will take the output of the institutional effect in this committee and consider that very, very seriously in the allocation of our resources. As Vice President Van Pelt is often reminding us, we have a scant 10 percent of our budget to expend in support of things other than people. So how we allocate those funds tied to an educational master plan, based upon the good input from an institutional effectiveness committee, is essential. The Institutional Effectiveness Committee is a committee that is basically run by the Academic Senate, so it's academic and professional matters. It has various makeup, as you see, in the procedures. And it is very new and very significant to how we will do business on this institution, and will help us with our decisions as we move forward to implement the EMP and allocate resources in support of our educational master plan.
Are there questions of Mr. Miller? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Doc?
I'd like to second it. And in my second, I would like to say that this policy was reviewed and approved by the College Coordinating Council, and it was reviewed and approved by the Subcommittee on Policies.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item is item N, Board Self-Evaluation, Discussion with Possible Action. You all have copies of the summary, and my thought on this would be that if there are questions to be raised, or comments to be brought to our attention by any of us or anyone else, let's receive those. But I think we've talked in the past about having a subsequent board retreat, probably sometime in November. And if we're going to do that, that would strike me as probably a better time to have more of a substantive discussion on this particular matter than to do so this evening. But I, so I bring that to your attention for consideration. So, but having said that, let me simply pause and ask, if there are questions or comments that people would like to make, what's your pleasure? Dr. Mann?
Mr. Thompson, I think, and I'm just asking a question, why did not be a good idea for us to, in a sense, take some kind of an action like to receive this?
Yes.
In order to show for the accreditation team that we actually did this?
Right.
And then we can discuss it further and also use this in developing board goals.
Absolutely.
And so I'd like to move that we receive this report.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion, questions, comments? Dr. Mr. Baum?
I just would say that through the process, which was also informed by a campus-wide survey that was conducted last year, there were some interesting things that the board will, is able to take into consideration. For example, we, in one of the areas where we saw that some improvement needs to be made, is in the making sure that we provide new trustees effective orientation to board practices. And then there's some areas where there's strong agreement on the policymaking focus of the, of the board, and approving the college mission statement and things like that. So it was very helpful to go through this process, and I think it will inform our own, now that we have a full complement of board members and a new CEO, will, will give us something to focus on as we continue to move ourselves towards a level of institutional effectiveness as well.
Other comments or questions? Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would, I would like to say that since I was the board president last year and had the report from last year, I did compare the two, and I think there'll be maybe, may be available a future date for the board. And to me, it was very interesting to see how, how seriously the board members took what we heard from the campus, because you could tell the difference in the, in the ratings, and, which I think could almost only have come about if people really took this very seriously. So I was, I was very interested to look at the, the changes and the pattern, which will also be something I think we should discuss it in developing our goals.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Okay, there's been a motion to receive this. It's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Excuse me, we are now at future board meeting dates. Wednesday, October 20th is going to be a study session at 6:00 at the Community Education Center. Excuse me, we've got on here Wednesday, October 27th, the Fall Retreat. Dr. Rocha, what do you envision with that?
Well, actually, I hadn't envisioned anything with that. That must have been, was that a standing date that we had on the calendar?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. So, that can be, for the present purposes, deleted.
Okay. Then, November-
Well, didn't you just say we were going to have a retreat in November?
That was, that was my suggestion, but-
That was 30 seconds ago.
Yeah, well-
But if we have this date on the 27th, and people have it on their calendars, maybe they don't have it on their calendar.
I doubt anybody has this on their, his or her calendar.
I have to confess that I won't be available the 27th or the 3rd. I'll be-
That's right, you're off someplace goofing off, out of the country.
I'm on an accreditation visit.
Out of the country, as I recall, yeah.
On an internet friend international.
Going to Paris? Is that where you're going, or?
I'm going to Kuwait.
Kuwait?
Yeah. Accreditation team for the American University of Kuwait.
We will not be jealous of your trip.
Yeah, I don't want to go with you.
I'll bring back, I got, you've set the standard, Dr. Fellow. I'm going to have to bring back some-
What are you going to bring back?
Yeah, I know, exactly.
Oil, little cans of oil.
Birkas for my colleagues.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Okay. But I do think we ought to take a look at our calendars for the early part of November. Saturdays seem to work best for this type of thing, or maybe a Friday afternoon, something like that. But we'll send around an email asking for suggested dates in, in early November, if people are in agreement that we need to do this. Okay? Anything else on future meeting dates? Future agenda items?
Oh, I have a future agenda item. I noticed in looking in the minutes, the item that I, we discussed last time on executive compensation, that I asked be brought back, well, the governor vetoed those bills. So we do need to bring that back in November or December.
Any other future agenda items? We have a number of things that have been raised for future agenda items in the past, and policy review, we're underway, that's ongoing. What's happening with time, place, and manner? Anything?
Whose turn is it?
Who's got it now?
I fear that if I say anything, I'm part of this process. We did have, and actually an action, not a result, but an action, on time, place, and manner. Where we, where we stand with that, first of all, keep in mind that no policies for the board's review and approval will come to you without it being reviewed and approved by the College Coordinating Council. So I want you to rely on that as a fact moving forward. At the last College Coordinating Council meeting, we took up the time, place, and manner. I think, to be brief about it, we generally agreed on the procedures, on most of the procedures. And now we're in the final stages of getting the policy text finalized. And I think Ed could help us.
Right. The Academic Senate did make one final recommendation to time, place, and manner in the policy section. We think it's non-controversial, just for clarification, but we realize that the president has to send it to legal counsel for review. And I'm still hopeful that it'll be done by the end of the semester.
Okay. Arming the campus, please, another hot topic.
Well, I would, you know, I've consulted with Vice President Van Pelt. I don't anticipate bringing this to the board this semester. It is an issue that we're studying. It's obviously something that we've talked about. But I think this needs to be, you know, looked at in context. We're also in discussions with Chief Sanchez from the Pasadena City, and it'll take some time for us to develop a proposal for the board. It's coming this year, but not imminent.
Just, so there are a couple of quick questions. The policy regarding sustainability, purchasing curriculum facilities, was asked in April of '09. What's the status of that?
That board member is no longer here.
Well, right, but-
I can make one comment on sustainability. We did ask to review the sustainability proposal that was brought forward, because there was a section referring to curriculum that we would like to see removed. We would like to see curriculum and other issues separated. So we are working on a revision of that policy and possibly incorporating part of it into the philosophy of the associate degree that will be, that is in development.
Okay. Any projection as to when we may see something on that?
Very soon.
Okay. We'll not try to define that term.
Good.
Zero tolerance for violence on campus. Dr. Mann asked for that in June of '09. What's going on with that? Do we have a report back on that our next meeting?
Oh, yeah.
How are students selective for admission to a class, if students exceed the number, et cetera? That was also asked about in June of '09.
I know that that issue is also being examined by the Senate's Ad Hoc Committee on BSI policies. So that is going through study and review, but we don't have any projection for that one yet.
Okay. Okay, anything else to be raised? If not, motion to adjourn? Or are we just adjourned?